I would like to call to order the Monday, April 1st meeting of the Manona City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Corr here. Alder Groupie here. Alder Moore here.
Alder Spate is excused. Alder Wood excused. Alder Kitzler here.
Mayor O'Connor here. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the March 18th meeting? Move to approve.
Second.
Any corrections or additions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. There is no public hearing tonight, or there are no appearances tonight or a public hearing. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Item G 1A, unfinished business, consideration of ordinance 3-19-715, amending chapter 395 through 398 of the Code of Ordinances concerning the removal of snow and ice from sidewalks put forth by the Public Works Committee. Is there a motion to approve this?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Dan.
Okay. There are no changes to this. Again, it's basically to add crosswalk openings and ramps at the intersections. Our main problem that we've seen is typically on Manona Drive.
Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved. Dan, I think you're going to be up here for a long time tonight.
I'll get real mad.
Item 2A, under new business, consideration of resolution 19-4-2346, a word of bid for City Hall and Library HVAC upgrades put forth by the Public Works Director.
Thank you. I'm presenting this for Brad. He's on vacation. This is the first read. All of the topics here after our first read tonight. We received two bids for the HVAC upgrades for the City Hall and Library. General heating and air conditioning provided low bid in the amount of $77,200. The work being done this year includes an AC condensing unit, an associate ductwork at City Hall, cooling coils at City Hall. And at City Hall and Library, there's going to be rebalancing and then ductwork modifications. So, the price tag of $77,200 will cover that. We had budgeted quite a bit, and the bids came in significantly under. So, I'm not sure what to go with with the remaining funds. If Brad's going to keep order and request to do the rest of the projects this year, or just wait until next year and save that money. So, that would be as far as that goes.
Do you have any idea when this will be started?
I believe it'd be starting as soon as City Council approves the contract and all the contract documents are signed.
So, any other questions? Alder Moore?
Yeah, I just, given the large discrepancy between what was budgeted and the estimate and what the low bid came in, are we, I mean, this may seem like a silly question, but are we sure we're comparing apples to apples in terms of what we expected? Because everything else is coming through higher this year.
Well, the second bid was provided by Kilgus, who is our current supplier and maintainer. Their bid was $89,400. The reason why we brought Strand on board is because they've got the background and the expertise with this sort of thing.
Okay.
There's a lot of work overall that needs to be done to both systems. I'm not sure why, where the estimate came in, why it came in so high. In any case, it's a good thing for us that it's, you know, more than half less than what we had budgeted. But, there's still, you know, there's controls that is part of this that needs to be done yet. I'm not really quite sure what the second half of this is. I think it's mainly here in the library.
Okay.
But Strand, they have significant experience in this, so I think we have a good bid.
Okay.
I think we'll be okay.
Okay. Strand does tend to budget a little conservatively, don't they, in their estimates?
Well, keep in mind that when we do capital budgeting, we're putting these numbers together already in June.
Yeah.
City Council doesn't finalize it until October, and typically, the plan sets are not finalized until mid-December. So, a lot of times, your prices can change, so we, at least on the big dollar items, we tend to budget high, just because if we budget low, when the design is done, if the estimate is higher, then we're kind of in a line. It's probably a better thing to be, to budget high and come in low, because then you still have the money to spend elsewhere. But, had we budgeted low and came in high, then we'd be scrambling to do a capital budget amendment to get the work done.
Andrew?
I think mine's not necessarily a question, but building off of Alder Moore's. As I understood it, we were having a lot of problems at the library, and it sounds like with this proposal, they're just rebalancing and then doing some ductwork fixes?
First.
First?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the second would be, they would figure out larger problems and then come back to us.
I think we want to see how that works.
Yeah, so that dollar amount, we might hit that yet this year, if they come back to us.
Right.
Yeah, alright, thanks.
Anyone else? Yeah, this library thing is a couple-year project, kind of doing it in steps, seeing what, hopefully it will be warm next winter.
The rebalancing just might work. I mean, that's something that was not looked at, I believe, previously, previous to 2018. The thought was, do the rebalancing, get the air moving in the proper places, and you might not have to do some of the other work.
Anything else? Okay, next item to be, consideration of resolution 19-4-2341, a word of bid for 2019 micro-surfacing project, also put forth by the Public Works Committee.
Yeah, thank you. Struck and Irwin provided a little bid for this work. We typically get two bidders. Farner is usually the second bidder. This year, Struck and Irwin had the low bid, $144,524.68. That included a map in the handout, so you can see the streets that we are planning to do. Again, that's micro-surfacing, and letters will go out to all residents once City Council and Public Works Committee approves this project. And, they basically have from June through August to complete the work. It's gone pretty well in the past. We've done three micro-surfacing projects, now this is our fourth. I think we've got all the works worked out. Seems to go pretty well, so. We are within our budget. We are leaving about $55,000 left to do some street patching, and then our typical $8,000 for curb sidewalk repair.
Questions? No? Next item to C, consideration of resolution 19-4-2342, a word of bid for Winnicott Park Lagoon improvements, also put forth by Public Works.
Okay. Prior to the meeting, I did hand out some information for you, and I said a couple paragraphs. It's additional information, and I'll cover that once I explain the bid. This is for the PCB dredging and additional sediment in the north Winnicott Lagoon channel. We have a capital budget of $846,600, and the main portion of the project is to remove the PCB contaminated sediment. Humber provided a little bid, the amount of $726,915. There was a second contractor that provided a bid. Houston provided a number of 1.175. Reason being is, there's some question, I guess, on the preapproval of the sediment that we're taking to the landfill. If you look at the handout, we did receive preapproval for the sediment to go to the Madison Prairie landfill. We've done our sampling back in 2015, and prior to this project going out to bid, we checked back in with Madison Prairie landfill, and they're requiring the contractor to do additional sampling. So, we wrote that in the project manual. There's a few other characteristics that they have to do additional sampling for, and I guess the concern is, if we exceed what they can take in for what they're authorized for, the sediment would have to be trucked out of state. So, if that happens, basically, we would have to halt the project. Or, we would just dedicate all the money to the PCB dredging portion of the project. Humber will not proceed with any of that sampling until the project is approved here at City Council. And, the nice thing is, the project is not slated to start until after July, the July Like I said, we already received preapproval. Strand feels pretty confident that our sediment will meet the requirements of the landfill. I just wanted to let you know, before we approve the project and dive in, that there could be a hiccup down the road. But, my best advice is, we should deal with that once we know what the sampling results are. So, we are not, I guess, in any danger of any type of lawsuit or anything like that with the contractor, if we have to halt the project because of the change in conditions that we, you know, that wasn't expected. That said, there's a base bid, and then there's two alternates as part of this project. There's a map that it provided in the handout as well. The base bid is basically from Nichols Road going north to the first line. That's our PCB contaminated area. And then there's a bid alternate one and a bid alternate two. Basically, we set it up that way to meet our budget dollars. And, we are able to accommodate all three sections for our budget funds. Like I said, we have $846,600. The base bid plus alternates one and two came in at $726,915. Another item down the road here on this agenda is engineering observation administration. That price is $65,000, and at least just under $55,000 for contingency, 6.5%, which is a typical percent usually they have on 770%. Again, if we have to take our sediment upstate, I'm coming back here to counsel the seat, I guess, for the approval on the hot proceed.
The part we have to do is the number one, right?
PCB.
That's the PCB. The rest of it is, since they're already staged there, we need to get that cleaned up anyway. At some point, we might as well do it.
Right, yeah. But, if City Council approves this in mid-April, it'll give the green light to Humber to get the sampling done. Do we have enough time to get the sampling done, get the results back, in order for us to make a decision before the project can proceed?
Questions, anyone? Andrew?
Especially with the third piece of the project, that little canal or channel, do we notify the property owners around that? How does that work?
They did receive some initial communication with the engineer back in 2018 already.
Okay.
This project, the research for this has been going on for over three years.
Yeah.
So, we've been in communication with the property owners back there.
Okay.
Especially with the extra sediment.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure, especially with machinery or whatever.
Right, and we will touch base again with them once the project's approved.
Anyone else? Item 2D, consideration of resolution 19-4-2343, approval of observation and administration services proposal from Strand Associates for the north Winnicott Park Lagoon improvements.
Okay, thank you. I just mentioned this as part of the last topic. For the dredging project, we have a proposal here from Strand for the amount of $65,000 to do the construction administration services, which is observation and administration. It does meet our budget requirements. $25,000 of their work will be dedicated to the PCB removal, and $40,000 for the alternate one and two, totaling $65,000.
Questions, Andrew?
So, by all standards, it seems like Strand is up and up and does things really well. Do we ever price out, compare? Are there other companies that do similar things?
Well, we do have our three engineers, MSA, Rebecker, and Strand. We received the proposal from Strand because they've been, the engineer on this, since 2015. It just makes sense to stick with them because they already have a background knowledge of each other.
Gotcha.
Anyone else? I have a question about the fiscal note. Why does it say at the bottom that the, in terms of the amount, $846,600, doesn't that apply to the previous item? Shouldn't this one just be the cost of the observation, or no?
Oh, the cost for observation and administration is in with the $846,600 budget item.
So, that number just appears at this, because it was in the previous one at all?
Yeah, because it's in the same project.
Okay, okay.
In my capital budget request sheet back in July, I have the construction amount, the observation amount, and then the contingency.
Okay.
So, there's, this is just one component of that.
Okay. I just wondered, since this was just the observation, if we would have just that price in the fiscal note. Anyone else? Item 2E, consideration of resolution 19-4-2344, a word of bid for 2019 Bridge Road Improvements Project, also Public Works.
Okay, thank you. We had a bid opening on February 28th. We received three bids. Humber, once again, provided the low bid, $2,339,750.30. This is for the bridge road reconstruction from Winnicott Road to Broadway. And, if you look on the fiscal note, I tried to break down all the items that are covered as part of this project, and outlined some of the financial obligations, especially with the city of Madison. Some part of this project, $842,714 is their cost. We will be billing them for design and construction administration services, $78,957. And, I also have the estimated price for the undergrounding of the private utilities that are part of this project. We identified that back in July as $410,000. Those prices are still coming in. So, more information will be coming on that. As far as the Humber bid, you'll see some differences from what we budgeted compared to what the bids are, mainly storm sewer. From our capital budget request, we had $20,000 in there, and we had the flooding in late August into September. That caused us to go back to the drawing board. You typically design for a 10- to 15-year flood event, and we had a 100-year flood event, and the overland flow route for the 100-year flood event is down Bridge Road, basically taking a right on Metropolitan and going into Riverfront, the area that we're reconstructing right now. So, we had, we're at the right stage of design, and it made sense to go back and account for the 100-year flood. 60% of the cost is City of Madison, 40% is ours, because the majority of the overland flow is coming from the City of Madison. We designed to put the 100-year flood event underground in a pipe, rather than have it go overland and flood the properties. So, that's why you see the significant increase there from what we had budgeted compared to what we had. The other big item is the bridge. We had $350,000 budgeted for the bridge enhancements, and that portion of the bid came back at We did hear back from the contractor today that they feel they would have had that cost either way, if we didn't allow one lane on the bridge versus allowing one lane, because they had to have kept it open for pedestrians and bikes anyway. So, they still wouldn't have been able to use the full width of the bridge. There was not a lot of interest for bridge contractors in this work, because they're already on big projects out there. Humber received one proposal for this work, and that was the one that they took, because it was the only one, and that's the best they gave them. That said, we are in line to get bridge aid for this project through the planning program. So, with our contingency and the bridge aid, we have, I believe it's around $162,939, to help if there's project overruns, as far as the overall cost goes, so. I believe that is it.
Andrew?
So, I apologize, you just, in detail, went through all the dollars and cents, but I want to make sure. So, just looking at the resolution, it says, Humber Contractors came for $2.3 million. Above that, it says that we budgeted for $2.075.
Right.
But, of that 2.3, Madison is paying for something, right?
Absolutely.
So, I'm wondering if, in this resolution, we include some language to say that? Because as I read this, we've underbudgeted, you know, as I read just the text, it seems like we've underbudgeted because it came in at 2.3.
Okay, so, even though at the last meeting, we approved the agreement where we had the prices identified, you would like to see another whereas here, just indicating that it has to be built?
I mean, I don't know what other Alders feel, but I think it would be clear, maybe just to the general public, if they're reading it, that they look at the 2.3, because they might not look at the fiscal note.
We could easily add another whereas for the next meeting.
Makes sense. Anyone else?
I would just agree with all of them.
Jim?
I would just agree with all of them.
Andy.
Sorry, it's been a very long week, and it's Monday. To add the whereas for Madison, I think that would be helpful for the public.
I would like to add, if I could, Humber does recycle all the materials. So, all the old roadbed coming out, all the asphalt, the bridge railing, which we're not going to keep, will be recycled. All of that's going to be recycled.
That's great.
That's great.
Jim?
Sorry, one more thing. Has Madison approved the, through their council?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we already have their signature.
I just want to ask a point of clarification to something Dan said about the cost that came back on the closure, or keeping open one single lane. He said that that's included now in the fiscal note because the price came back, irrespective of whether or not we closed it or kept one lane open?
Yeah, that was, that's reflected in the bid, $151,000.
Anyone else? Alder Moore?
I just wanted to say, as I did when this was discussed previously, that, once again, I support the 100-year storm effort, and, in fact, it's a strategy that increasingly communities are using for their resiliency, even though it seems like a leap to go from 20 years to 100 years. The reality, unfortunately, is that we'll be there again sooner rather than later.
We just thought it made sense to do it because these rain events, you know, the 100-year, the 50-year, they're more frequent.
Yeah.
And, if we're three, four years down the road, and we get another 100-year rain event, and we flood out down there, there's going to be questions. Why didn't we account for this? We've accounted for it.
Anyone else? Okay, next item F, consideration of resolution 19-4-2345, approval of proposal from Strand Associates for engineering and construction services for south Winnicott Road improvements, also Public Works.
Okay, thank you. We have $80,000 set aside in the 2019 capital budget for this design review. Strand Associates, who has worked with us on the bike vet committee, they provided the engineer's report as part of that committee's final report. They presented that council here, I believe, about a month, two months ago. So, this moves forward with what they've outlined in the engineer's report. They're going to look at, they're going to look at removing the bump outs, they're going to look at installing bump ins for parking, look at design for sidewalks, installation of intersection speed tables, milling the old asphalt, completing the resurfacing, adding bike lanes, and new pavement markings. None of this is set. These are just the topics that they're going to be looking at in their design. This will be coming back through committee and council before a decision is made on how to proceed with that. But, this is something that we targeted back in July already, and back then, we had dollars for design and construction. That was trimmed down a bit to just complete design in 2019. And, please know that part of this proposal, there's $78,900 from Strand for 2019 design. If the City Council approves this as a project in 2020, the other half of the proposal is $93,600 to observe and do construction services for the project. So, all you're looking at for this year is the $78,900, which does call our $80,000 of capital allocation.
Andrew?
Hopefully, this question is more for the public's point of information, but the design process, whether we add sidewalks or not, whether we have them on both sides or not, that goes through Public Works Committee, correct? Or, what's the process for, if somebody wanted to voice their opinion one way or another before it comes to council and is more solidified?
Well, City Council has to say. But, right, the process starts after the Public Works Committee. Even if the committee votes to not install sidewalks, the final decision still rests with City Council. There will be meetings, once they complete, probably 60% is made, there will be information coming out, present that plan, and get feedback from the council.
Anyone else? Alder Moore?
Well, you said that, I discussed a little bit what Strand would be looking at. Would they be looking, would they provide, would they be providing more than one alternative, or is it just about the bump ins? Taking the bump outs out and putting the bump ins in? Are they going to be presenting us with several different options to look at?
I can't answer that.
Okay.
I do know the main focus will be to remove the bump outs, for sure. If they can accommodate some on-street parking, that's where the bump ins come in.
Right.
We have adequate right-of-way to accommodate bump ins as well as sidewalks. And, the goal is to get the people off the streets, as far as pedestrians. So, that's why they're looking at sidewalks versus a path. And, so, if we can do sidewalks, get rid of the bump outs, there should be adequate room for bike lanes on both sides, and adequate traveling with both tractors. The speed tables, they'll be looking at that to control the speed. Our police chief likes to call that the silent cop, and we're looking at two locations for that, so. If there's something else that you think the engineer should look at, please let me know.
It was actually just, it was more in relation to how much room we have in terms of those right-of-ways, because it seems to me, the less ins and outs we can, you know, do and still solve the problems that we have down there, I think, the better, in terms of plowing, in terms of everything else. If we could, you know, if we can avoid that, obviously, it would make sense to try to do that, it seems to me.
Anyone else? Okay, next item G, consideration of resolution 19-4-2347, amending the 2019 capital budget to complete temporary limited easement acquisition services for Abwood Avenue reconstruction, also Public Works.
Okay, thank you. This is a capital budget amendment request for the 2019 capital budget, seeking to add $16,700 to the budget. Our 2018 capital budget set aside $70,000 for the design. The bill for Madison for design is $68,800, so we've got enough balance there to complete this work. Temporary limited easement is something that is not a permanent easement. We're not buying land. We're basically paying two locations to basically disrupt their property to complete the construction. When the project is done, everything is returned back to normal, and we're out of the way. So, it's a temporary use of the private property immediately behind the right-of-way line. There are two properties that are identified that need TLE, the temporary lease of easement, and the Business Movement Association and the Manona Apartment Investors LLC. So, basically, what this does, one City Council and the Public Works Committee, if they approve this capital budget amendment, that $16,700 will be allocated to have MSA, who is the City of Madison's engineer, complete this work for us and offer up TLE to those two partial buyers. It's, on these larger projects, TLE is a standard, standard part of the project.
Alder Groupie, did you have a question?
So, was it just not, you just weren't aware of what the figure would be at the time of the original budget proposal, and now you have the figure and we need to amend it? it? Or was this something that was unforeseen in the original engineering process?
Well, when we prepared our capital budget, they were not this far along. There's been a lot of back and forth with this project in particular with regards to funding. Are they going to proceed? Is it going to hold? And that's still being debated. The TLE was not identified at the time when we put our capital budget together. So had we known that, we would have set aside the money in the capital budget. As far as construction, still not sure what that's going to have. Hopefully, I don't want you to know.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alder Kitzler?
So this might be just contract standard language, and I'm just nitpicking here, but it says, "When a negotiated settlement is reached, a payment request will be provided to the city." So do we already know what that amount agreement is by those two property parcels? Or would you potentially be coming back because somebody said, "No, I want $20,000 instead of $8,000" or something?
With TLEs, they typically know where these settle at. As far as Manona Drive, we purchased an awful lot of right-of-way, and the figure that you named, that was around the ballpark of what we paid for, permanent, a right-of-way. TLE, you know, it has, you know, the two parcels at approximately $2,500. That is based on their experience, and I would like to say industry standard for TLE. I think they feel pretty confident they're going to have that.
Alder Coeur?
So on the bottom of the fiscal note, it talks about where we're pulling that $16.7 from. It looks like we're pulling it from the HVAC and we'll have the library, although one of the other alders had concerns about whether we'd need the balance of that $174,000 for future projects. So are there options for us? I guess this is maybe a larger question for me, Brian, as well, to pull that $16.7 from somewhere else? Or if we end up needing that full $174 for the HVAC down the road, is that going to put us in a bind?
Potentially, but I mean, we could look and see what our undesignated general fund balances. Again, you don't want to keep going to that well too often if you can avoid it. That's one possibility. We can check with the finance director on that if we think we need to hold the HVAC account kind of free and clear for the moment.
And this was reviewed with Mark as well. You know, with all the bids that came in, and we're looking at, you know, the bottom dollar lines, if you will, the HVAC bid was fresh in our minds, and, you know, obviously there's a big balance there, and that was, you know, I checked with Brad, I checked with Mark, talked with Brian, and it seemed a logical choice to take it from.
I think we probably will be looking at additional HVAC, but it would be in the next year's capital budget, or maybe even the one the year after.
Right. Just because it takes time to put that manual together, so I can see that probably proceeding to 2020.
But good for us to know to keep that in mind.
Yeah. Anyone else? All right. I think that's it for you, Dean.
Thank you.
Very much. Final item H, Consideration of Resolution 19-4-2348, Approval of an Affidavit of Correction to the Certified Survey Map Number 14728 to Rename Metropolitan Lane, put forth by the city administrator.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's a memo in your packet that kind of outlines the processes. As you know, with the redevelopment of the lakefront or the riverfront property and the relocation of Metropolitan Lane, we will look to rename the new roadway once it's completed. The process by which we have to do that, because we established the site layout with the certified survey map, we have committed correction to that CSM. So I have in the packet what's called an affidavit of correction, which is a formal instrument that we do to make that name change. This would require two reads by the city council, and Public Works Committee will also get an opportunity to weigh in on it. They're scheduled to review it at their meeting this week, and then after that, they'll make a recommendation, and they'll come back to the council on the 15th for your final authorization.
Questions? Alder Groupie, then Alderman?
Um, I, uh...
Did you have one?
It's okay. She can go first. Go for it.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I'm not necessarily opposed to this, but I think we have some very special upcoming opportunities with the riverfront development to really honor Ho-Chunk names and recognition as part of that project. So I think we should just keep that in mind as we move forward.
Okay. Alderman?
I'm just wondering if this name changes has been discussed or brought up in any way with the remaining residents on this lane, which is to say the restaurant and the yacht club?
I think they're aware that we were going to be changing it.
They are?
Yeah.
I don't know, I'm not sure that they're aware of what we're going to change it to.
Okay.
But they're, they know that Metropolitan Lane is going to be, obviously...
Something we've always intended to do.
Okay.
Metropolitan Lane, Metropolitan, the Chase Bank used to be the Metropolitan Bank years ago, when it was first built in the '60s, I think. And so that's where the name came from. And Inland Boat Company is kind of an iconic...
Sure.
...business.
Sure.
That was located right there. And we just, we wanted to have something that had sort of a water connection, because that's what we're trying to do for the whole development. And it's also meaningful, too. That was there. I mean, we purchased Inland Boat Company in order to build this, so.
Right.
And also to have it separately named from the development itself, so it's not...
Yeah. Sure, I'm not questioning the name at all. I just, I just didn't know how much, from a branding standpoint, if it would cause any undue, really extreme hardship on the people that are there in terms of, you know, they might have towels with their address, something, I don't know.
Sure.
So that's why I just wanted to make sure that they were aware.
Yeah, that's fair.
That we didn't change anything because of it.
Yeah, but that's fair, and we can do that, reach out again.
Yeah.
Andrew?
I see, I know we're not passing a resolution on this, but the Yahr Lane, how is that named, or how is that?
You know, when we checked the CS, we thought that that was another item that had to be corrected as well, but when we checked the original CSN that was approved in 2017 and then a revision in 2018, Yahr Lane was already listed on that CSN, so.
Oh, okay.
I think when we, we've been talking about that, and we did it, and it must have just gotten put in there at the time.
Anyone else? Okay, I think that's it. Reports of committees, commissions, et cetera. Alder Groupie?
I just want to congratulate our new police officer, Andrew Hoffman, on being sworn in this morning. Congratulations.
Alderman?
I have nothing to report. I just would encourage everybody to get out and vote tomorrow.
Alder Kitzler?
Go vote.
Alder Coeur?
I bet you're missing, I'm saying, "Go vote," but also the, I wanted to remind everyone that the volunteer appreciation is April 11th. And so if you serve on a committee, please join us.
And I hope as many of the councils can make it, are there as well. Leah, did you have anything to, any news?
No report.
Dan, did you have anything to report?
No.
You've reported enough. Administrator Gatto?
Yeah, just got a couple of things. One, the clerk asked me just to give a report since she couldn't be here tonight because she's preparing for tomorrow's election. First, just for the general public, so that they know, the Badger books will not be used for the April 2 election, spring election, which is tomorrow. The reason for that is there was a slight program error discovered during training on the state level that couldn't be fixed from Wisconsin Elections Commission in time for the election that's tomorrow. So the system will be relaunched next spring. Voting will take place as it always has, using the paper poll books, as usual. So we appreciate everyone's understanding with kind of the back and forth on this, and we hope to have, in consultation with all of our partners around the state, have the system ready to go for our next cycle of elections next year. There were four, just an update on the extended voting hours that we had for this election. There was four in-person absentee voters at the last evening of eight additional hours provided on Wednesday evenings, March 20th and 27th, or, and then also Saturday morning, March 23rd. So we only had four additional people that came to utilize those hours. Also, they'd heard about the additional hours from the city's news website flash notices that we send out. And then lastly, it's quite fitting that tomorrow marks the city clerk's 18th year with the City of Manona in the clerk's office. I just wanted to congratulate her and wish her the best of luck tomorrow. And then just a couple of other news and notes. So tonight's meeting was very expedient and brief, and that's great, but I fear that the next meeting on April 15th will have a little bit lengthier agenda. So I just wanted to give you a brief preview of some of the things that are coming down the pike for April 15th. We do have Maggie Baum from Maggie B Productions scheduled to give a presentation to the city council on the communications study. I'm bucketing about 30 minutes for, about 15 minutes for the presentation, and about 15 minutes for questions and comments from the council. If we need additional time beyond that 30-minute window, we can schedule more time with her if need be. And by Friday, I will email out the council a copy of that final report, so we have it a couple of days in advance of the meeting on the 15th. We will likely also have a first reading and discussion on this special events policy, and also the kind of corollary street use permits and policy that go along with that. That's coming from the Parks Committee and also the Police Department. We may also be discussing the parks encroachment ordinance, if that's ready to go on the 15th, and then likely a first reading and discussion on an FMLA policy for paid parental leave that we discussed at Person on Finance Committee tonight, that we will bring that discussion back up for April 15th. And there's a couple of other items that will be on the docket as well for the 15th. So just so you know that that's coming down the pike. And then looking ahead a little bit further, it's likely early May or thereabouts, we will have, the CDA will have finished their review of the Renew Manona Program, and we will bring that to the city council for your review and discussion, likely the first meeting in May, with the second reading probably the second meeting of May, or it might get shifted a meeting or so. But just so you know that that's in, has been in process for the last couple of months, and we'll be providing you with a recommendation on that as well. And then, lastly, I sent this out in my email to the council last week, but if you are interested in attending the Clean Lakes Alliance Save Our Lakes Community Breakfast on May 8th, please let me know, hopefully by first thing tomorrow, so I can send in our registration to them. I've heard from three council members already, so if anybody else hasn't got back to me and is able to attend and wants to attend, just let me know.
All right. One thing about future agendas as well, I talked with, County Supervisor Buckingham was here tonight for the meet and greet, and asked her about the possibility of scheduling her to come in and give us an update on the lake levels committee meetings. They should have the recommendations, but then I think they should have approved them, so I think it'd be good for us to hear what they're deciding. We've all heard bits and pieces of that, but, so she's willing to do that, so we'll schedule that once we get a little better idea of what future weeks will bring, so. In terms of my news, I guess, I would like to have committee, no matter what happens tomorrow, your committee requests by a week from today, which is April 8th. For those of you who are continuing, if you would please send those to me. Again, the April 11 volunteer appreciation, we're really trying to get more people to come this year. We just didn't have a very great turnout last year, and we will be honoring our retiring council member, among other people, so, so please come. And again, urge everybody to get out and vote tomorrow. So is there anything else? Nope? Then is there motion to, there are no appointments, so is there motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
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 We are adjourned.